Well, back up here to Ben Brothers.
Just say it just.
Um, like fifteen T box area there's that.
Oh, there's a drain there.
Okay, well he said it was just blowing it was just.
Oh, yeah, it's closed. Yeah.
Well, it wasn't.
Uh huh.
Came with all the water. We got some air in the line somehow, some way. I'm just trying to figure out what how the water was coming out of the last line.
I I I don't know unless it blew, but we would have saw that and we was not quite full, but pretty ample this morning.
It's still blowing right. Uh huh, but it.
Uh, we'll check it out.
Thank you.
Call the meeting, new order. We're in the process of deciding what we wanna do. I did get a reply back from Jackie and there is somebody in her office that would like to send in a proposal to us too, so. Um, she's looking at, I told her, well, I need it before the next meeting, so that way we can compare what we wanna do, where we wanna go with it. Uh, she was looking at that they were looking at the two hundred and fifty dollars. Today, this gentleman is the four thousand dollars. Uh, there's three thousand, one is at five, so that's why. Didn't, I overs- my oversight was putting it in the agenda, so, uh, when we do the agenda for action items, if. So when we get to, uh, updating the agenda, we'll probably will need to put it in there. It is in the sub daddy session, but I do. The next, uh, meeting on the work session was.
Hold on, I wanna speak on this if possible. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this actually looks really great. I like the way they put this together. I do wanna say I know the name even setting, but I, and, uh, then we're going to turn to page, uh, twelve and thirteen. We're gonna start on.
That's what she was doing when she was ready. Uh, the next was the bulk water stand pipe report. I threw it in here. I I know it was mentioned last meeting that you guys wanted to have this. Uh, if you need the numbers for differences between last year and this year, I've already got it figured, uh. This year, there's about a seven thousand dollar difference from last year to this year.
For the first three months.
In the, in the positive side of it.
Yeah.
For three months or just one?
For all three months.
The biggest thing here is this price per gallon.
Yeah.
Okay. You'll see it's drastically different because it reflects the adjustments gone there.
And what we're looking at, Donnie, uh, he's putting it on his calendar that we do at least thirty, thirty days or forty-five days.
Yeah, we've been kinda running off the just, the thirty day deal of checking calibration.
But let me ask you a quick question. I'm showing a two thousand eighteen.
That's nineteen.
You are nineteen of you.
I, uh, didn't change that. I changed it when I saved it, but I didn't change nothing in spreadsheet, so that's my fault. I will change that tomorrow.
Okay. Well, uh, okay, I see right here. We're at twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-four, and we're there. Man, Donnie's got that one dialed in.
Yep.
It's on the agenda for later this week or or next week too.
Just double check.
Yep.
Is it holding?
It, yeah, since we've changed that valve and. It's been holding for.
From last year to this year. Because whereas.
Which the credit cards probably make it easier for the account.
It's more convenient for him.
Yeah.
Going further with this, what I'd like to do is we'll do it once a month and we'll throw it in with either the financials or those, uh, probably with the financials. As just an insert, but I figured being the first time we're talking, if there's any questions or concerns or any more information you need out of this sheet, let me know. Uh, we can go from there. Uh, if we need to, we'll run like last year's and keep it in the book, so that way you can compare from last year to this year and where where we're going.
Be great to have that comparison.
Okay. All right, we can do that. All right, any other questions on that aspect of anything? Okay, next, uh, we have the agreement with the CCA CC. I gave you the email back from Carolyn. You asked me to run a fire as to the reasoning of going through the discussion on it. Uh, if we don't, in a sense, we end up having to change the mission of statement right up. We end up, which we're gonna have to do anyway, is set up our own bylaws and that stuff. We're going from CCA to CMD running it, um. Biggest aspect of what she was looking at, the governing, if you look at number two, the governing body of the art. For the district have entered into a contract to define the duties and responsibilities of each of the contracting parties. Including the covenants that may be enforcing rules, regulations, or any. We're going to be kinda reinventing the, how the CCMV, we can probably miss, charge one person with it. I know Bob has more to say. Their bylaws.
No, we're never accepting their bylaws at all.
Okay.
They, we cannot do that.
All right.
Uh, their bylaws are strictly to their corporation.
Okay.
Uh, our bylaws don't, aren't even effective. What's going to be affected is our rules and regulations. That we must change. If you read the documents produced by the attorney, she specifically spells out that we must create a section of rules and regulations of how each individual will be treated. In other words, how are we going to accept the, uh, mass resignation? During the mass resignation, the reason they had to resign and yes, is because they would not treat each property owner equally. Uh, just a, off the top of my head, when they tell unskirted home, yet has already been done. My potential is doing, they're killing how we're going to handle that complaint from the day we accept this going forward. So even if we accept this tonight, it's gonna be, I want to venture to say, upgift all of that laid out only to enforce that first covenant violation.
What I'm asking of you then is, I'd like to have what you and Bill have set up and then I can compare with what.
That's not an issue.
And and then that way I can bring it to Harry and Greg at this time and let them review it, then we can bring a whole proposal.
Please hear, but, uh, here's the problem.
My way over the whole board.
Uh, what's, what's the whole board? You have to bring it.
However you want.
Because this board is, if you did all of this, okay, I have no problem with accepting what you did. Moving forward though, that committee is gone. Everything else will be brought to this board and then this will, after it create a point, a committee.
They're not bringing stuff to us.
That it isn't gonna go every other week.
Absolutely. They can review them and that committee's chairman will come before this board and present it, their findings to the board and then that property owner, let's just pick on Donnie, says he's building a house and he doesn't like what that board said, has the ability to stand in front of this board and so he has.
He had some working on it to see it and then bring a finished document to the board, then everybody can.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Agreed that completely.
I do too, I I see no problem with that.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, let the minutes reflect, we've had some research and we'll, uh, just talk about that briefly, uh, new business.
Said, I mean, uh, I did put it on our agenda when I transposed it over the, within an agreement of CCA CC. Is on our agendas, it wasn't put out in the public when it was my mistake when I transposed it. Any other additions or changes to the agenda? If not, I need a, a approval of the agenda as the board has it. I so moved. It's been moved March twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen minutes. We accept it, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Uh, bill's payable. To me, uh, fix the ansel s- system in the golf course and also cleaning the hood. Uh, my explanation of it is I know under the agreement with the, with the golf course and the restaurant. This is how it reads, the tenant shall be solely responsible if any on a revolving schedule repairs to the premises which require expenditure of resources of such, of one thousand dollars shall be responsible for the landlord unless such repairs are made necessary as a result of tenants neglect or intentional acts. Uh, if you look, the, there was two hundred dollars for the ansel system and then this month you have, uh, let me pull it up. Under my.
It's page three, second from the bottom.
Okay, I flipped right by it.
Page three what?
Page three.
Second from the bottom.
Account three, two, four, zero, zero.
They went in and clean the hood.
They didn't clean the hood, they went in and the.
Inspected, inspected, which is.
There's a, you know, there's an annual fire inspection that is required by the health department of the ansels, ansel hood.
Two hundred.
And there was actually, um, a fault found in it, which, um, required, um, sent us to, um, well, us to have electrician rewire a piece to interlock the fan and the hood.
Which I, I think in our aspect of it, for our safety and maintenance of the building, that is something that I look at as being, I would rather pay for it on a yearly basis and know that it's getting done than it is to put it on the liability of them to make sure that, cause this has happened in the past, where the past owners or the past DCs of it, that said they did it, but when the other owners came in, that hood was a mess. It didn't work. It was a fire hazard, so I, I feel that as our maintenance of it to keep the risk of fire and all of that. It kind of falls on hands.
If this was actual cleaning, if this was actual cleaning of the hood, then I would say it's on the tenant.
Right. That's.
It doesn't matter if it's cleaning or the hood. The, the contract's clear, you know, they pay the first thousand dollars. They're renting space, not a restaurant, they're renting space. They're operating a restaurant within space with our acceptance of them using equipment that's already there. And I know Greg's just running some of these new contracts. The contracts are clear. They're in there for a reason, is to stop that thousand dollars from being on our books because they're operating. We do not subsidize these businesses like this.
Eric? If, if you don't mind, um, I, I don't know the restaurant owners. I don't want anybody to think this is an attack on anybody. Cause it's not. Um. I, I just signed a lease with my new building in town. I'm responsible for everything inside that building, including the plumbing, the fixtures, everything. The only thing they're responsible for is the outside shell. I'm even responsible for the electric inside that building. Okay? And then they also charge me what's called a core fee or, I don't remember exactly what they're calling it, but they're making me pay my fair share of the property taxes, my fair share of the building insurance, and my fair share of the security and the parking lot cleanup.
Are you, do you pay anything to do with the fire suppression system?
Okay? Uh, any and all inspections, which I just paid a fifty dollar inspection by the fire chief, any and all inspections are on me.
Uh, but I, I'm asking, did you do an inspection for occupancy?
I did have an occupancy.
Okay, that's different than what I'm asking. I'm asking, are you responsible for the upkeep of the fire system?
Yes. Yes.
Or is that building wired?
Um, I do not have a fire system in there, uh, but I am responsible for everything inside that. I'm even responsible for the heating, for the HVAC system. If that breaks down, that's on me.
So there is a different section in code and I don't know the section off my hand, but where you're dealing with life safety items? In this case, a fire suppression system that is essentially tied to the whole building. So if that, uh, let's say they didn't do that inspection and it lapsed and the fire chief, um, you know, wanted to shut the entire place down, not just the restaurant. Cause it's a life safety device. Um, so that's where we, where I felt in our discussion was, cause we actually talked about this, how do we want to build this? How do we want to be reimbursed from it?
But our.
Or is this on us as building maintenance? Because it is tied to the life safety side of the building.
We have that thousand dollar cushion built into the contract.
That's not, that contract is not talking about life safety items.
I'm not too sure about the thousand dollar cushion you're talking about, however, I am sorry, but conducting business is conducting business. You can ask anybody in here that conducts their own business, they're responsible for their costs.
So Terry and you, when you guys were part of that building, was there a, a fire suppression system or fire, uh, fire alarms and all that stuff? Did you guys ever deal with anything with that?
No, there's no, there's no.
Cause that's the land, so if there would be, I'm saying in a multi-use, multi-use buildings.
They did provide a. They did provide a bucket of water.
The typically the fire suppression or fire life safety item is a considered building landlord, um, deal because they can be held liable if there are injuries due to, uh, lack of inspection, lack of maintenance, the owners of the building are responsible, life safety events.
So, so do we pass, do we pass this on to the taxpayer? Okay, do we pass this on to the rest of the public where we're subsidizing a private entity? That's what I'm asking.
Mm-hmm.
Because in my opinion, that's what we're doing.
So we're providing a life safety device, maintaining and upkeeping it for the public and the taxpayer.
David, you have.
For their safety when they, when they are patrons in that facility.
Were we talking about a hood for a stove? Where does the grease come from in the hood? Who pays for the grease?
Good question.
So, but, but, but the whole point is, is we didn't pay to have it cleaned.
It wasn't cleaned, they.
We paid to have the, the system certified.
I'm sorry. I messed up on it. It wasn't for the cleaning, it was for the ansel system to come in and repair it.
And.
We had that inspected. I remember approximately a thirty-six hundred dollar bill that we've already beaten because of that.
That was a year ago.
No, no.
Does this gotta be done every year or something?
This is an annual inspection. The thirty-six hundred dollars that Bob is speaking to was for us to bring it up to code last year with the repairs that needed to be done to it.
And that was still in the contract and it should have been after this contract. Harry, any thoughts?
I still think it's a safety issue. I mean, I don't, um, I just want everything out there to work and everybody make, make some money. But I think in this situation here, that was just, uh, bring it up to, um, code again, wasn't it?
The thirties, the, the la- the twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen piece was to, uh, was actually prior the, uh,
Yeah.
initial inspection by the health department requires, uh, a change of tenant, um, to have an inspection done. And at that, in time of inspection, it was found that the ansel system was not up to code, to current code and needed those repairs to be done before they even were able to occupy the building.
No, I think Harry was asking about the reason.
Right, so this piece is essentially what is, this, the health department requires every year, you have to have it certified. That it is in good working, work condition. Has nothing to do with the grease being put down, the grease trap, has nothing to do with cleanliness of it, is does the ansel system function?
And I think if we're running that out and things to them, I think we need to have it up to snuff for their, so they can use a good equipment properly. That's might be.
Yeah, I, I have leased space in, uh, strip malls for restaurants and it have fire suppression systems in them. You know, like Greg says, quite common, you're paying for CAM area, they call it.
CAM, thank you, it was CAM.
You're paying part of everything, you're paying, and you are responsible for HVAC, you're responsible for virtually everything except the shell, except fire suppression system. The, the building owner owns a fire suspre- suppression system and is responsible for it. Now, whether it be the tax.
Is this part of the fire suppression system?
Yes, fire suppression system. Whether it be taxpayers or whoever, it's the building owner. You guys are talking about, should it pass on to taxpayers? It's not passed on to taxpayers, it's passing on to the building owner, regardless of taxpayers or private entity. The fire suppression system typically is responsibility of the building owner.
And we're the building owner, okay.
And we're the building owner. Because most of the time, if a fire's gonna happen, it's gonna be in the kitchen. You don't have public in the kitchen, so, but it's going to create a problem throughout that whole building. There has to be alarms throughout the whole building to get everybody out and that's what they do test with it. Is once that ansel system goes off, it regulate, it's put out throughout the whole building to make sure everybody gets out of the building, even though it might be contained in the kitchen. Now, the occupancy of the unit, the unit occupancy, the tenants of the unit, specific unit, are responsible for whatever fire protection in that unit, but not of the building. So.
What do you, what do you, what do you mean on that?
So, fire extinguishers, a, oh.
Fire extinguishers.
Yeah. But that's for, in a hood, in a hood situation, which is part of the building, in this situation, it becomes part of the building. That'll be. A, a, a building, part of the.
And fire code is structured in a manner to where that you don't have a tenant maintaining a system or tampering with a system to cut costs, to, you know, or, or due to oversight or ignorance, it doesn't matter. They're putting it on the, the owner of the building and to maintain that for life protection of whoever the tenant is.
Okay, I think we've spent enough time on that. Hold on just a second, please. Uh, when we talked about some bills, you said a, uh, backflow preventer was also installed.
Mm-hmm.
Did that happen?
It did.
And how much was that?
Um.
It was right there on the front page, isn't it?
Well, it was ninety, well, it was over twelve hundred.
It's like, yeah, twelve hundred and sixty dollars, I believe.
When, in two thousand eighteen or is it just?
Nineteen, it's first page. And that's a requirement of, of the state's cross connection and backflow that any of our, any, all of our buildings, um, are brought up to state code now for cross contamination. Now, mind you, the, uh, the backflow preventer was put on the main supply, so it's not tied to the restaurant or anybody individually, it's the main water supply to the entire building.
All right, uh, again, move back to, uh, I need a motion to pay the bills.
I would make a motion to pay the bills at this time.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Move down second that the bills be paid. Uh, I need further discussion. What was the price of the, uh, two different bills on the golf course?
I'm sorry?
From last, from the last one.
Inspection and repairs.
You had two hundred dollars last month for a fixing ansel system, golf course restaurant, okay?
You mean the restaurant.
This one here was, those three, was two hundred and ninety-seven eighty-eight, so you're looking at.
Eight.
Two ninety-seven eighty-eight was for what?
For the ansel system certification.
And what was the other one? The other one was two hundred dollars for the fixing and so the two hundred ninety-seven.
Fixed down the. Two hundred dollars to electrician to interlock, to tie the interlock in.
To your line system. So you're looking at five hundred dollars.
Another discussion. Call for a vote. All the trailer paying the bills sitting in front of saying aye.
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 Posed. Uh, motion carried. Uh, financial report.
Next, uh, go to the yellow section, you have the financial report, uh. So finally getting revenue in from taxes, uh, for.
We're in the black last year and this time we went out in the lock, so I think that's progress, um.
That's awesome.
Um, and I think as far as golf course, although it is in the red, our season is just starting to ramp up, so we should be seeing a lot more, um, revenue and.
Well, I have a request for both of that.
Okay.
Lauren, do you have that with you as far as where the golf course was at a year ago?
Um, I can get it, it's in my office.
Oh, that's all right. That, like Bob was asking on the earlier one, the comparison on the water meter, it's always kinda nice. I don't know how hard that is to add another column, but just to be able.
Oh yeah, I can do that.
To say what, where were we at?
I know if you went by it today, it was packed.
It was.
Yeah, went by about three times and it looked like there wasn't.
All right.
Got it good.
James, you said you had some additional information or that's part of the operation?
Well, that's for the operation report.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, go to that.
Okay, operational remarks we have, we are currently running the new spring league softball. We ended up with about fifty participants. The new score booth has already been proven beneficial. Uh, we'll see more use as we enter into the summer months. We've been working on to fix the drainage, drainage issues between the fields. That leads to our infield material washing away and believing that we have made the necessary improvements to save time and money going forward. We are, uh, currently working to find a better option for mowing the fields in order to keep them in better shape and save time. While doing it, youth, uh, baseball registration is underway now and we hope to have some new teams participating from far away as Trinidad, which also includes a new age division. We've also been doing some spring cleaning at the park to remove fallen branches and clutter that have accumulated over the year. We will be shifting our focus to campground late this month to try to make both areas cleaner and more enjoyable for use. We will trim trees to open up the sites and hope to be able to complete the bathroom remodel this month. Uh, security cameras are being installed as well and we hope to have them all up and running at this month. I know they were looking for locates to run the, uh, internet down there, so we're on that aspect. I'd like to thank, uh, Josh, he helped me Saturday with the expo for the chamber. Uh, we had a booth put up. Uh, we gave out, uh, new water bottles. Uh, we were able to get rid of a case of those.
We've had that, we've had that.
After that, I went and watched these guys play softball, so that was an enjoyable afternoon. They played their hearts out, uh, so Donnie, I know last Friday went up and he created the campground. Uh, went through there today, road is in excellent shape through the campground. He did do the road from in front of the library down to the, uh, ball field, the parking area, but we
Parking spot.
We're going to need to do some work in the parking area, so we're waiting for just kind of a little wet weather to make sure we can compact it and make it better. Uh, so that's with the parks area, but, uh, golf course, uh, from the pro shop activities report for this month, twenty-four new members, uh, for two thousand nineteen. Still have half this members to sign up, but we'll be up overall for two thousand nineteen. Uh, to date, have sixty members so far. Um, we have tournaments scheduled almost for every weekend, uh, starting in May.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're looking at that as, uh, like I said, with the weather being the, as good as it been, I know this last weekend.
We had a good weekend.
Prem had a real good weekend, uh.
We were up in March over seven thousand from last year.
March.
So we're doing really well. A lot of people playing, of course, in great shape, aren't you doing great job?
Yeah. As for the maintenance side of it, uh, zero turf loss on greens, uh, greens being mowed down. They were real sticky. I played about two weeks ago out there. I had to go check it out, make sure, you know, uh. Greens were a little slow, but they ran from, he's ran from one, about one and a half down to about one and a quarter now, on the green.
Oh, yeah, one, two, five right now.
Yeah, so they're speeding up a little bit, uh. I know he's fired up, uh, sprinkler systems and they're turning green out there. It's looking good. Uh, new chipping, uh, pitching and, and mo- fertilizer around that area, it's looking good. I know, uh, Donnie screw went in and set the new poles for the canopies that will be out over the patio. We won't probably put them in for another week or two. Uh, we gotta let that cement here. They also put a pad underneath the, the restroom out there where it's been a gravel area and gravel's been getting to the grass and it's been kind of a, uh, problem. Uh, so, since we had to get a truck with cement to part of the poles, we figured we might as well put the extra yard in so that they give us a full truck. And we went and did that on the same aspect and it was money that we had put aside from last year to defray these costs in that situation, since it wasn't done last year. Uh, I'll tease our. Defray these costs in that situation, since it wasn't done last year. Uh, I'll tease our aerated, uh, back nine collars approaches aerated. Uh, bunkers done. We had a discussion with friends of Holly Dot. They're willing to buy. Half the sand for our, our sand bunkers. They will give us half. We're looking at probably about fifty ton of sand. Mark's in the process of, we're going to do twenty-five ton until that's gone. Then when we get another twenty-five ton. We'll send the bill to, half of the bill to Holly Dot, uh, friends of Holly Dot, they will pay for half the sand. So all we're moving is, is half the sand and our maintainers to, to get it out and put into the bunkers. I know there's some bunkers that will need some work this fall. Uh, we're gonna pick out the bunkers that. We do need it, but yet be sparingly enough that the ones that really need the, the work when we have this fall. We aren't using the sand that we're getting now to, to have to redo it, so, uh, that's what we're looking at that. Uh, irrigation back nine. Uh, had two broken swing arm joints, they were fixed. Uh, operational, had two Wildcats under control heads, they got them, some golfer damage. Uh, had three satellite issues, was able to get them stringed out, mark right?
Yes, sir.
Uh. Y-strainer at, uh, irrigation pond valve breaking serviced, irrigation pond leaks. We're looking at options with that as well.
We just kind of stumbled upon that the last two days.
Yeah, that was one I was running down to elements.
No, no, no. The irrigation pond, you know, up there, um, by the. The dog houses and where the, the main line runs out of where the Y-strainer is, i- it's never been wet before and now it's, it's wet.
Okay.
So just kind of FYI.
Investigation company.
Top dresser, they got it back, uh, together. Uh, they had an old white and top dresser that probably what, twenty years old?
Yeah.
Five years old. They went through this winter, rebuilt it, put in new, uh, belt on it, new rollers, it's like new. And, uh, it's their, one of their major pieces of machinery that they need. Uh, they had bought one for the. A John Deere that went on the back, but it takes, it, it isn't as well as this whole piece that they, they use. It, it does a real good job. Uh, so, we're looking at fertilizer too this year. This year, looking at ten thousand dollars, we're gonna do it in, in spurts. As we're gonna get our spring and our summer right now, see how it goes, what we're, how long we're gonna last. We'll wait till August or September to worry about our fall and winter. And if we have some good rains December, we might not have to fertilize as much. So, that's one of the aspects that we're looking at in dealing with that. Donnie, as for operationals?
Like before that, how, how are the elk, do you have to stay off the greens?
The, um, as far as this spring, all elk damage is pretty, pr- pretty minimal. Um, we got lost a little bit, a couple of urine spots on some greens. Maybe like three spots, that's it. So, um, that's a victory compared to, you know, what we've had as far as those herds being down there.
Cause I use those footprints as my cop.
Right. So you want more?
Well, I know, and I know with the geese wise, it seems like all of them are in South Park right now.
So you've been staying off the golf course.
They've been, I guess the hazing, between the hazing and, uh.
It's worked.
It's, it's helped.
I was, I was fired at, well, in conjunction with the DOW's recommendation, um, as of about the eighteenth of March. Wanted us to start tapering off the, the, uh, cracker shell hazing because now's, uh, the mating season nesting is starting. And we wanna kind of let them do that so that we can look at, uh, oiling eggs and stuff on the nesting side.
I was gonna say the permit kicks in here pretty quick.
Yes, it does. Yes, and I've already renewed that.
And after talking to, uh, Mr. Brown the other day, he, he doesn't see him pairing up around the golf course at all. He says they must be pairing up, up over on the South Park side because he doesn't see him around the ponds or anything on the golf course and he's been watching for him to pair up.
We gotta pair at the water and sewer shop.
Yeah.
There's some on the west course, or a bunch on that pond on the west course.
Okay, operations?
So operations, water and sewer, public works, we've, obviously the, the blade arrived last week. Uh, we have. Working on getting a schedule put together for, uh, our initial maintenance of roads. We've done a couple intermittent where we've had some major. Um, issues, um, so if there are any, I would say, uh, or I. I'd rather not say, but if the public has any, uh, concerns or, or, or they feel like something that we've missed or overlooked. Uh, please give the office call, let us know, but otherwise we are working on getting that scheduled out here for the month of April to run through, uh, our roads in entirety. Uh, and get that, uh, established. Hopefully mother nature will help out with a little bit of moisture in those areas when we do that. And we will be trying to time it with that as well. Um, the water side, we've worked through multiple. Kind of what we call normal, um, incidences with, uh, having some engineers looking at some things, some, um. Instrument control guys looking at some things where we're having some struggles. We've pinned all of the, uh, skids, we've got them all prepped for our. Our summer, summer's peak usage or, or production mode. Um, out of that being said, we've, we've had a second opinion come in and talk. And look at ourselves and diagnose that we are essentially on the last, um, viable year of life of those, um, uh, filters. We're gonna have to, and they are a part of our five-year, uh, program, but they're gonna get up, up the list, uh, for twenty twenty. Um, but that's gonna cause us to do a few changes to our, uh, cleaning procedures to help prolong those and, and still keep them effective. Um, Gary and I and, and Jim have, have spoke to that a little bit on what changes we need to, to make to accommodate that. Um, uh, water production is up, um, comparatively. Um, not, I didn't compare it to last year exactly at this time, but, um. Sewer side, we're, we're dealing a few, we're still dealing with SBR valve number one down at the plant. Um, I've got, uh, inter, um. Excuse me, the, um, instrument control guy coming down tomorrow. He's going to look at that as well and see if that's something. We've kind of used all of our resources and our knowledge of what it could be. We're hoping he has a little insight in something, maybe an oversight and we can make it work easy with minimal cost. But we'll know more about that, uh, starting tomorrow through the end of the week is what I have him here looking at, all the plants. Um. Distribution side, we've, we've had a couple little hiccups, one up at, uh, Cold Springs where we, um, had a repair that we needed to do in the vault. A stupid little quarter inch fitting broke and ended up having five days worth of shutdown to try and get it to. To bleed out and fix. We finally got that, uh, fixed out yesterday. Um, uh, fan press has been, we ran it last week, we ran it again today. We are, uh, we're exceeding our expectations, I believe, as far as the efficiency that it's creating for us and the money savings. And, and coinciding with that is, is more than what we, we'd expected. So all good news on that front. Um, we do have a few little. Uh, we're meeting, waiting for the last little piece from Josh Cook, uh, milco engineering regarding the state's permitting and all that stuff to. Basically just wrap up that project in its entirety and, and just basically become a, a, a normal for us. Um, so. I'm hoping to hear from him, uh, this week or early next week on how that finalized out. Um, we have looked at. A couple of options, we're looking at, um, in conjunction with the fan press on our use of our lagoons as a drying bed. And that ties back into the permitting and everything else, but we still are looking at, um, how we're gonna address. One, the stage we're gonna require verifying, uh, the lining is still intact as well as they want us to dredge it. Um, but we have a sanitary survey coming up and as long as we are kind of, whether it be engineering or actual, um, action being taken. Um, those are acceptable to the state as long as we are showing that we are making progress in, uh, those avenues. Um. Jumping back to the, to the water real quick, the, the divers are scheduled, I'm waiting on a, the final day to what they've chosen for us that they'll be out. We're making all the preparations that need to be done for them to accommodate them coming and diving the tanks. Um, outside of that, I think we're.
We did have a meeting today.
I've got a few more pages.
We did, uh, have a meeting with Ryan this morning.
Yes, Town Row.
Uh, Donnie and I went up, uh, met with Mickey and Sonny and Sam and the engineers.
Yeah, JVA, the original engineering, that, uh, for Town of Riley that put that line in and did a bunch of repairs for them. Um, we sat down very open, um, meeting with them on how we can move forward. They are going to, uh, get. Uh, Ted Miller in conjunction with JVA, get a meter up in there and put in and start getting some data off of that. We'll still be using ours as, as kind of a. Um, comparison and fail safe going forward. Uh, once we can get all that and get the data showing that everything is correct. Then we will all sign off and, and move forward and hopefully never revisit this piece again.
They, uh, they, they even got to the point, they, they wanna even test all their manholes. And Ryan make sure that they aren't getting infiltration and stuff in it. So, it looks like they are moving forward and they, they wanna see what the problem is. And why, what's creating the problem.
Mm-hmm. And we're based, our, our stance in it, I mean, we have a contract with it and they're gonna fulfill their piece of it. We're basically on a consulting partnership with them to. Let's get it done and put to bed and.
Cool. And then also on operations, I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you brought up cold springs, that brings up my old note, did we ever replace those bolts over there?
Bolts were, are supposed to be here this week, actually.
Okay, so that still needs to be done.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I knew we had talked about it, I didn't know where we went on that.
Yep. We, we talked about it and we said in March, I would order them, so, and were, they, they were ordered and they. Uh, my, um, conversation yesterday was that they should be showing up this week or early next week.
I didn't wish to. Uh, you talked about water production, uh.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. What about the sales versus production? What, what's our difference with that?
So we have a pretty good discrepancy on that and we've, we've had for kind of ongoing for a few years and. That is where we've spoke prior about the absolute necessity of getting these new meters in. And working to that because, one, you have to have a baseline, you have to know that if you're producing X, you need to be, um, recording. Somewhere close to that X and billing accordingly. And right now we're having a pretty good difference between what we produce versus, um, what we're billing for, so. We've, like we talked about.
Just a, no, just a guess number.
Um, uh, we're off probably fifty-five percent, you know?
I, I'm looking at more between, between thirty-five and forty is what difference is of what we're billing and what we're.
What's that equate to in gallons, just roughly?
Uh, we're looking at probably eight million.
Yep.
So we're losing eight million gallons a month.
A month.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Holy moly's.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Adam, you know, that's going with the meter coming out of the.
Right. Have we gotten any, um.
I just, I just got yours, no, we haven't put in, we haven't got any of them.
Oh, actually, I've, I installed, we installed one today. Um, I've got twenty meters of the new meters that we've, you know. Budgetarily ordering meters as we discussed when I got the approval to go ahead and go get some. We're no longer putting the old style in, we're putting the new style in. Um, and I've got, uh, a few work orders, those are gonna get taken care of first that need new meters, attrition stuff. Um, I don't see myself until the next batch that we order another twenty or twenty-five or whatever the number be to where I actually go pick a. Uh, say a lunar or a, a, a street and incorporate a street. Um, right now I'm, I'm catching up on the backlog of attrition. As well as new construction and lord, the new construction is off the charts right now. Um, so.
Let me, let me push you another way on that. Uh, understanding that we are adding some meters and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Where do you think the actual loss might be? Just, I know that's a guess off the top of your head. Is it meters or is it lines?
I believe that we are looking at, let's say, industry standard is, is around fifteen percent is what you should expect. So if you take fifteen out of, let's, let's shoot high fifty-five percent, that drops you down to thirty, or, I'm sorry, forty percent. Um, I'm hoping out of that forty, the meters is probably gonna take a lion's share of that way, thirty, thirty-five percent.
You think the meters are that far off?
I've got a master meter log, there's meters out there, there's nineteen sixty-nine.
They're trash.
That are still in use.
They're still going.
So when I did the accuracy testing independent that I sent off, uh, when we first started talking about this, uh, uh, last year. Um, we were showing low flow and what they consider low flow is gonna be fairly in line with standard household use. Five to eight gallons a minute type usage. Um, out of six meters that we sent off, all six of them. Were over twenty-five percent inaccurate on low flows and I think three of the six were actually recording zero.
On low flow?
Now, on low flow. Um, they all recorded a hundred percent accuracy on high flow. Um, and mid, mid-range flow, I forget, I'd have to pull the report again, they were.
What's low flow, like flushing a toilet or something?
Low flow, you would have to have your sprinklers on and taking a shower and running probably another sink or sink to get out of low flow.
Okay.
All at once. Low flow is standard household use.
Quick question on this water, because it may be sewer, I see a, something dug up off of, uh, Sabola out in the field, is that something? A repair, a break or whatever?
Off a Sabola out in the field?
Yeah.
Down, are you talking down in the bottom down there?
Not quite, but yeah, pretty close to that area.
That is nothing of ours that we're digging currently. Um, I, I have fielded a couple of phone calls, it's probably a test hole. I've gotten two phone calls, one off of Saratoga. Um, so there's a street down there, Saratoga, down in the bottom, that is, um, a gentleman who's calling about, uh, doing a test hole and. And putting a lot down there, but I can verify.
Okay, I have one more, uh, on operational, but it doesn't pertain to Donnie. Um, Jim, you had mentioned that, uh. It was greater up to sixty members at the golf course.
Uh-huh.
Uh, compared to last year?
Uh, we had fifty-one last year.
Okay.
Fifty-one.
What, here's the question, and I know you don't like, but what do we charge for nine holes or eighteen holes, two members?
Uh, we charge, um.
What do we charge them to play nine?
The cart fee, the cart fee.
I'm not talking about cart fees, I'm talking about what do we charge them for the nine-hole play?
We don't have an improvement fee. We don't have an improvement fee.
Okay. So why are we happy to be having more mem- more golfers play for free?
No, they're not playing for free and they don't play that much.
If we don't have the fee, I'd call them.
No, wait, so, well, we can't have an improvement fee at this time. We're gonna get more members, cause members won't join from Clubwell if we have an improvement fee.
Well, it seems to be they are joining, uh.
Yes, they are, except we don't have an improvement fee at our golf course.
If I call any golf course and ask how much you play for nine holes, it's usually between six and eight dollars, average of seven.
Here's what they have, a lower rate at those golf courses?
A lower membership fee.
A lower membership rate.
Right, right. The lower membership rate, they can't improve the fee.
You can, you can. You can go into City Park and for example, I could be a member and it's five hundred dollars. But it costs me, I think, seven dollars to play every time I play.
Per nine.
Per nine.
Per nine, correct.
Okay, well, no, that's pretty cheap, isn't it?
No, I think it's six fifty per nine.
It's per nine.
Per nine, I believe, yeah.
So whereas we're charging nine hundred dollars at, and it's unlimited golf, you don't have that.
Six fifty.
The biggest, the biggest.
I've not heard this nine hundred.
No, 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 it's not nine hundred, it's six fifty.
What's six fifty?
Yeah, six, five ninety-five for a weekday.
Okay.
Five ninety-five.
For a weekday.
Uh, that was mine.
Four ninety-five, so a hundred dollars?
Yeah.
That, not that big.
No, no, wait, it's four hundred dollars that I want.
It's four hundred. I, I'm not sure, I'm just putting the figures out there as to comparisons.
We're trying to get more members and then we have a cart fee that's higher than most of the courses and stuff, and it's got your improvement fee that's kind of built into that fee.
Yeah, I notice you're two to three dollars. You're two to three dollars, so if we subtract, subtract the two or three dollars, call it two, that puts you at five. And we're not even charging the five per nine. So, uh, I think that's something this board needs to look at in the near future. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, well, okay, okay, the thing, can I say something about the memberships? We're gonna lose members if we do that. Except the guys from Clubwell will stay in Clubwell. And stuff, we're gonna lose what we already have and that's what I don't wanna see happen. So this might be.
Thank you. All right, state law of conduct and the mayor. In order for business and the board to be conducted in the most effective and expeditious. Thank you. Alright, state of conduct and demeanor. In order for business in the board to be conducted in the most effective and expeditious manner, it is necessary that all persons present maintain a demeanor of civility with the board, staff and each other. Conduct that appears threatening or aggressive will not be tolerated. Shouting, speaking out of order or the use of offensive gestures similarly are not acceptable. Such behavior con- shall constitute the forfeiture of your right to remain in attendance and may, as a point of order brought to the board's attention by council or any board member, including the chairperson, result in your being asked to leave the meeting by the chairperson or, upon your refusal, being escorted out of the meeting by the proper authority. Uh, did any, no s- no one signed up for citizen input, so James, the agenda items.
Two items, we have real estate sale that is intact there. Said it was lot thirteen, unit four. Uh, there was a four thousand dollar offer with it. I know there were some concerns with, uh, the title insurance and that they wanted us to pay out. Uh, at that point, uh, I know Mr. Cook said that, uh, they, we could accept the offer if they choose to take the responsibility of the title insurance or decide to use it quickly.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to create a motion at this time. Uh, this may be ongoing for a moment, but I would like to accept the numbers on this contract. However, I wanna counter the contract to give them the option, they either want to pay foot payment deed, get no additional number, or if they want, wish to continue with the general warranty deed, that they pay all costs.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
I would second that.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries, so.
Okay, next on the agenda is agreement, uh, CCAC, it's in the packet, it's under the green section. I'm sorry, it was. I think that's a red.
Red, red.
I'm sorry. That discussion on it, it's all up to you. Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the agreement for CCACC?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this agreement. I don't like the wording completely, but I think it's, uh, been narrowed down, uh, with discussions since the last meeting to accomplish what needs to be done and point out to the board that, uh, we have other work ahead of us other than just accepting this.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the agreement. Do I have a second?
I second it.
And motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Any attorneys report? Nope, the, the only attorney's report was, yeah, forgot. Okay, new business. Uh.
I would like to mention, we'll summon our new business. Um, I would love to see in our next study session, um, maybe us starting a discussion on incorporating, uh, getting that, I know we can't do it, but I would love to see us, uh, uh, maybe getting the ball rolling, uh, getting the community involved in that.
Okay. Uh, I can get some of the information as what it takes to incorporate. If we do incorporate, what, what the benefits are, what the drawback is, all that aspect of it, all that type of stuff, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have cups of new business, but all you and Donnie members at this time. Go ahead, I think. Did you have any? First one is, uh, directly related to the real estate. What I would like to see this board do, I, I still feel we paid, not that we paid too much for the road grader, but it bussed in our budget, uh, coming years up. But I think because we are selling a number of pieces of property, what we should do, now that's here for discussion, is, for instance, we just have a sale of real estate. When it's not in our real estate enterprise, we should dedicate those funds to pay down the principal, make principal payments each time we have a sale, to knock our payments down for future budgets of the, uh, road grader. So, in other words, we take those funds and we make principal payments instead of holding off to make high interest in principal payments. I feel just one or two principal payments will drastically offset our costs going forward in future budget years. Now, we do have a concern of, I'm gonna call it two thousand from our discussions here, uh, with, um, Jim. We've already dedicated, I think, two thousand dollars from real estate sales into the budget. I'm not asking to change any of that. What I'd like to see is we cover whatever that budget number is first and then each sale, we apply to principal payments of the road grader in the year of twenty nineteen. I don't wish to exceed twenty nineteen. So, if we have three sales or twelve sales, only in the year of twenty nineteen, those be applied to the principal of the loan on the road grader so that it lowers our next year's monthly payments, our, our semi-annual payments, I believe it was.
Yeah. And this was a simple interest loan, no prepayment penalties.
It's a, a base, yeah.
So, I would say it was quite a bit of interest then.
It was, yes.
It was.
Discussion? I would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay. So, you are ruling that sales after the budget is covered from real estate goes to lowering the principal?
That is not to, that is not included in the enterprise.
That not included in the enterprise and not to exceed the price of the road grader. So, in other words, if we have two hundred thousand in sales, we only have a ninety thousand dollar loan, but I'm not saying we save all that, but we apply accordingly.
And for the year two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen only.
Okay, budget met. I'm gonna just make the motion concise here. Budget met first, uh, when it is not covered by enterprise regulations for two thousand nineteen and not to ex- principal payments and not to exceed the cost of the road grader.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Further discussion?
How does that fit into our parameters that we can use, budget-wise?
It's in the, uh, administration.
I mean, you have a problem.
Like I said, the only thing that we had put in was the two thousand dollars in our budget.
Well, there wouldn't be any legal reason to come up with legal reasons.
I mean, so it wouldn't do anything if it just.
No, once we meet, you know, the budget requirements and then, um, the part that I'm not clear on is the principal because if it's simple interest, you're gonna be accruing daily interest, so that payment will not just go toward principal, it'll go to your interest and then anything that clears interest will go to principal.
Yeah, so if we made a payment on the first.
And included the extra.
Right.
Yeah.
It would basically go.
Yeah, then it would all go to the principal.
Absolutely. Yeah, you, you make your principal at the same time you make your note payment.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Um, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. You have another new business item?
Yes. Uh, it, this relates to the, our architectural control committee. From what we just did, we accepted funds from that committee that is, uh, shutting down. I would like to see, if not all, the majority of those funds applied to our legal costs we spent to do this. This board has spent a lot of legal fees that weren't budgeted for another corporation's, uh, legal. And we need to recover as much of that to put back into our budget that we can. And I'd make that in the form of a motion.
I'm sure. Uh, Bob was, made a motion that the legal, uh, that the fees recovered from the CCACC, um, be designated for attorney's fees. Do I have a second? You can have a second and you can vote against it. It's just, I, let me look it up and see.
I would like to see, uh, off.
I'll second it, okay.
Let me look and see.
If you're moving to second it, further discussion?
I would like to see what, uh, what the manager's opinion on this.
See, right now, it's just, it's just in a line item in our budget. I'd rather have it, just put it in a line item right now and then see what progresses and then, cause you can always pull it out of a line item and put it for that disagreement down the road.
Why are you reluctant to do it immediately? I'm just asking.
I would.
Think you're gonna have quite a bit going forward with this rules and regulation piece that you're gonna have to do.
Yeah, I would like to see.
I think we need to develop the architectural group first. We have some monies there. Um, the bill's already been paid and I don't, I'm not arguing with his agreement on that, but I think if we have it there, it's not if we're spending it yet, but if it's in a line item right now, we have some time to, to look at some things and then we can shift the fund very easily to what he's asking to do.
No, I think what he's asking to do.
Let me make a suggestion here. I, I think Harry's correct, but what I wanna point out is, we just spent legal fees for another corporation that we shouldn't have spent in the first place. Well, it needed to be done. I don't have a disagreement that it needed to be done. What I'm saying is we need to recover those fees. You're, we're going to have more fees, but those fees are on us now that we've accepted responsibility. Those fees are on us and we only budgeted a certain amount for legal fees.
And we are going to start getting the, uh, fees that we charge for the reviews and stuff are gonna start going into that account, correct?
Yeah. What, what I'm, what I'm looking at is, we budgeted twenty on it. Right now, we've, current is eight, almost eighty-five hundred, which in that, in that, architectural committee was what, four thousand?
Forty-five, thirty-six hundred, something like that.
Forty-six hundred. Do you wanna drain that whole account to pay the legal fees on it?
We spent, as you say, approximately forty-five hundred.
No, we've spent eighty-five hundred.
Well, no, all legal and architectural.
Yeah.
So, we have our own legal fees to deal with.
Yeah.
Okay, if we spent four thousand, that's just rounded to that number, what's in the fund?
That's what I asked, forty-five hundred is what is in the fund.
There's forty-five hundred in the fund and we've spent forty-five hundred. How much have we spent?
I don't know, I, I, it isn't broke down to as, I, we'd have to go back in research, what was.
I don't need that, just a guess formation.
We're going to say forty-five hundred, or you were just telling us what's in the.
Oh, that's just the amount in the Colorado architectural account. I don't really, but this, yeah, this eighty, it's eighty-five hundred.
Gotcha. Yeah.
I mean, that's roads, that's other things, so.
Yeah, that's it.
So, that's one thing we'd have to break it out as to look at our bills.
And that's what I'm saying, all I wanted us to do is cover what we spent on their behalf.
Okay.
Only on their behalf, I would, I would make a motion that we table this until, um, until you give us the number.
Yeah, we have to deal with the motion on the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, deal with the motion on the floor, good.
So, uh, we have a motion to take the money that is in the archite- that has been transferred to us from the arche- architect, you know those guys. And, uh, you're, you're talking like I am. And spend that on, uh, uh, legal fees. Uh, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, posed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. Now, if you wanna make a motion directly.
I'd like to make a motion that we bring this back up next meeting, um, with the numbers, please.
Okay, and actually, we don't need a motion for that. Uh, Chair would just direct the district manager to bring us how much we have spent on the architectural control committee and legal fees this year. Any other new business?
Okay, old business. Uh, last week was kind of a long one for me. Um, I did get all the preliminary concept in for the GOCO grant. We're putting in for eight hundred and forty thousand dollars from GOCO. Uh, that was with the final build-out for the trail system around Lake Bock with the trails down to the library and down to the com- uh, community center. Came out to be about one point two million dollars. So, with what we're dedicating as tearing out the old cement, uh, gravel that we do have on hand, uh, dealing with Pueblo with their gravel and possibly having them come back and crush again if everything works out right. Uh, it's gonna cost us a hundred and thirty thousand, but it's gonna be more in, in-kind work. Everything that we're looking at is gonna be in-kind. As turn the, the cement out all of the way, uh, ha- having gravel on hand to put under for bedding for our trails, all of that. Uh, Pueblo, they're looking at the, still about the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they promised us of A1 funds that we can look at. Uh, next, this is just the preliminary part. If we get selected within the grant of the concept, uh, that we have to go back in in May, which will give us the overall, uh, whole concept of everything, where we bring in the trail system and why and go further in, which the final grant will be decided in September, which makes this kind of the opportune of it is, it is shovel-ready basically because we did have a present trail there and, uh, we won't take that much, but tearing out completely, putting it up.
Jim, I lose, I lose track. We've had meetings, public meetings for, since I was fourteen years old. And what, what has been approved and what hasn't and I.
What, what was approved, what was approved and what your, basically, uh, public meetings were for was for the concept and design by altitude.
Okay.
Which we've had that and I guess it's been sitting on the shelf for two years, nobody's ever moved it forward.
So, this is the moving it forward.
Or at that point, we're moving it forward. That we got a commitment from Pueblo as a, that they are going to put in cash money, which is going to benefit the other end and whereas us doing in-kind work, it satisfies Pueblo that we have skin in the game. And right now, we're looking at, instead of being a seventy-five, twenty-five match, we're looking at a sixty-five percent match by GOCO, which is opti- optimal for them because they're, they're looking at, if you get on the seventy-five percent of them having to match, it's not a done deal. The lower you can get on their side, the better off.
It's not a done deal.
Yeah, it ain't a done deal.
It's a done deal.
Yeah, but we're in that second stage right now where it's gonna go to their review committee and saying, this is a project we'd like to fund or not.
So, tonight, you're just sharing with us.
Just sharing it out. That's what I've done through the last two weeks is got all the numbers together, figures together, put it all on paper, shipped it off and they're reviewing it now, so, yes.
Quick question. Uh, I understand what the in-kind is.
Mm-hmm.
What, how does the in-kind affect our budget? Because we do have to pull from departments, wages and other things, please.
You all, you all affect us. We're taking the high side as I had to have altitude go back and redo all the figures on it, cause at the time when altitude did it, it was seven hundred and eighty-five thousand is what they were looking at, that it was gonna cost this whole project. Well, just the demolition on site of it went from, I think it was seventy-five thousand to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand for the demolitions. So, but I don't think it's going to cost us that much because that's looking, uh, CDOT's rates for demolition, which is usually a bridge that has rebar that has all of that in it, which I don't think we'd have that.
That's a forty percent increase.
Yeah.
But my, my question is, how is it going to?
It's gonna, it's gonna affect us in time and manpower. Uh, looking at it though, going to be probably next year. That we did put money away into capital improvement, which that. going to be probably next year, that we did put money away into capital improvement, which that is going to pay probably a third of what that hundred and thirty thousand is, we're gonna have in manpower and equipment.
Okay, thank you. Anything else as far as old business? I have one old business. Alright, uh, spoke to the board a few months ago after the wind damage, have we ever assessed our properties for wind damage? I know wind season's not over, but.
No, tomorrow.
Uh, hopefully. But.
You know, but I haven't.
Have we done any assessment?
No, we haven't, not at this point.
Um, well, I hate to put it this way, but a lot of times, no news is good news, from kind of department heads, I don't have anything, shingles coming off type scenario. And that conversation has been to have, but as far as, uh, maybe bringing a, you know, a, uh, um, adjuster or anything like that, uh, no.
Well, we know we have some, it's usually, you bring in an adjuster and look at everything.
Yeah.
I know you're probably wanting to wait until after the wind season, but we do need to document, say, hey, can you come out after wind season?
Get some photographs, yeah.
Uh, because we need to document it as soon as possible, cause we know we have damage. I don't know what our deductibles are or anything else, so it, it's something that needs to be looked at.
Okay, uh, one other thing on old business, like I said, with the real estate, I'll have probably another proposal in on that for the next meeting, so we'll bring that in to, to compare whatever, if I really wanna do it, and, and if at that point, if I get it, uh, I'll give it to you, if you wanna counter offer or whatever, we can go that way, appreciate it.
And we don't need to revisit this sale that we did today, as long as they.
No, no, it's a done deal, I'll call them, I'll call them tomorrow and let them know this is what the board decided, they'll accept the four thousand dollars,
as long as they accept our counter.
But you are responsible for the title, if you wanna go that way, or if you wanna go to a quick kind, we could do it for a day.
Uh, I'm gonna make a couple of quick comments and correspondence when we get out of here, um, Bob did raise a question, and I wondered this myself, um, what an excused absence is? Because I've never heard a board, board member not have an excused absence, and, uh, but, uh, so the closest I came is I looked at several other metro district bylaws, and it's in the bylaws, and both of the, I only found two.
Nine hours?
No, and two other metro districts, so we would probably have to put it in to cover it. Uh, an excused absence is as long as you report that you're not gonna be there to your superior, so for the board members, I would assume that they would have to let either James know or me. Uh, and that's all, just, uh, informationally. Right, and for your information, I'd like you to, when you do that, include the state statute, because there is a state statute.
Okay.
That doesn't mix that up, so I will check that. Uh, also, just of interest, uh, to everybody as far as growth, I, uh, wearing my newspaper hat, I visited this morning at, gosh, I can't think of the name of it now, but the old huge building up there.
Columbia House.
Yeah, Columbia House building.
Paragon.
Paragon, they're about sixty days from opening, uh, he told, the guy I talked to, who was their legal counsel, which made me a little nervous, but, uh, he, uh, he said that at full bore, they anticipate a hundred and fifty employees. So if they don't, even to get to half bore, uh, seventy-five employees.
What do they mean?
Uh, they, uh, produce three different purities of hemp wood.
CPD, CPDO.
Non, non THC hemp.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, so anyway, I just thought that was something that'll affect all of us. Uh, yeah, I see that real estate guy, there's a glimmer in the.
Donny, Donny and I went up there about a month ago, cause there was some issues that we seen, and they were driving around, and said, eh, let's stop in, and they told us to stop anyway, so we went in and we talked to them, uh, with their bio product, it might be something that we might look at too with our, with our dentists.
Their waste might benefit our waste in some way.
So, we're looking at that aspect too, so there's.
Quickly before we move on, that brings up another old business, did you have that conversation with county about chipping?
I did, about chipping, so I spoke with Kelly, he was gonna talk to Alf, which is Ramra.
Right.
Um, and he did express that they have the one single chipper, it's very small, um, but they would be open to a discussion about it.
What issue?
That's kinda where we left it as of last week. So, uh, hoping to get in front of, uh, among some other topics that I need, that we need to talk with Alf about, of having, continuing that conversation regarding the chipping.
Anything else? If there is nobody who's just very angry about it, I'm just gonna not even get a motion.
They're like, oh.
Really, make sure.
Wait, it's.
Where is Cold Springs?
So Cold Springs, Digo, do you know what, what they, the old timers call Tocu Rock, no-mag group, computers, people going on the way to ride? So it's gonna be, uh, halfway, more than halfway ride.
So it's on this side of the thick paners?
Yes, so we have another water plant up there, um, that feeds, takes, supplies water all the way on down, but.
But Cold Springs is between here and the, what, two?
Yeah.
I guess, I was.
Is it actually, is it?
Uh, Mrs. Drifson has all them goats, it's just east of that.